Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Roth?
Here.
Commissioner Mom?
Here.
Commissioner Polly?
Here.
Mayor Neely?
Here. Welcome, everybody. With that, we'll go right into our -- any questions for future agenda items? Normally, we get these set up at a commission meeting when we look at things that we want to cover in a study session, but does anybody have anything they want to get out? I did have one question -- well, I'll do that another time. Anyway, any future agenda items or study sessions? There being none, we'll go into our discussion and our trolley program. Bob, did you want to talk about something specific? Was it something not on the agenda? Usually, we don't do that here, but...
Yeah, I'm representing the transportation.
Okay, so you had to be associated with these things. Okay, good enough. Thank you. Yeah. You want to come forward too? At the same time? Yeah. Well, Nancy Bush.
Good evening, Mayor, fellow commissioners. I'm here tonight to discuss the trolley and seeking some direction for the trolley. And a little bit of history for the trolley. The trolley, first trolley, Helen was purchased in 95, and she was purchased to mitigate the parking congestion in downtown Oregon City as it related to parking. And the parking shuttle was discontinued in 1997, about the time, actually, that I came on with the city. The trolley was rented to Clackamas Heritage Partners. On the limited use and the operation costs were primarily paid to Clackamas Heritage Partners or whatever entity they were called at that time, the EOT. The lack of funding led to additional revenue being used to pay for the tourism use out of the parking fund and the route, and the season expanded over time and continued to be paid from the parking fund. And to date, we have added two additional trolleys to the fleet at additional cost of $357,000. Trolley expenses, on average, are about $70,000 a year, so it's about $1,000 a day for the 10 weeks that it runs, and it does not include, really, the staff time or the fleet reserve that goes into maintaining and trolley replacement.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Does this include the cost to store them?
That price does include the cost to store them, yes.
Thank you.
What is -- you know what that cost is?
It's about 30, I want to say, $30,000 a year? Is that what it is, John? I think your signature's on the lease.
I forgot.
It is $30,000 a year.
And this is early, yeah. Staff is looking for some direction, and that we recommend that the city commission direct staff to discontinue the current trolley program, liquidate the trolley assets, and explore lower-cost parking mitigation alternatives with Clackamas County. And that's all.
Is that it?
Yeah.
And who do we pay the storage fee to?
We pay it to Norm Stewart, who runs Armory. He leases the Armory from the state, so he collects that.
If we kept one of the trolleys for special events and so forth, would we have a place to store it independent of the Armory and...
No, we don't have any place to store it, then. That cost is whether we have the one trolley or the three trolleys.
That was my question.
Because they have to be stored covered.
They really do have to be stored inside. I mean, they really aren't made for Oregon. They are beautiful, and we've done a really good job maintaining them. We do spend some money every year always having their wood finished and sealed and making sure the roof doesn't leak, and since it does still rain during our tourist season, we really try to do a good job maintaining them. However, they can't be stored outside or, you know, under a carport or anything. They really need to be in and out of the elements.
And have you had a discussion with any of the current trolley stop areas with the businesses, to see what their impact would be if we did cancel this program?
The businesses, it didn't stop, I should say, it hasn't really served downtown in a sense, and last year, we didn't stop at the municipal lot. We shortened up the route because we don't really have anybody riding it to mitigate parking, because no one gets on it to take 45 minutes to get back to their car, is the problem.
So I guess if we disband the trolley, then why would we be worried about solving the problem mitigating the parking if that trolley's not doing it? So what we're having to now, if we lose the trolley, what we really need to ask is how do we replace what the trolley's been doing, which hasn't been parking?
Which hasn't been parking.
It's been primarily, you know, shoveling tourists around the city. So it's a small number, but it is a number, and so we need to think of options on how to deal with that. I guess one of my concerns with this, and trust me, I know I'm fighting an uphill battle, and I don't know that I even want to, but I think the thing that bothers me the most is that the report says just get rid of it, and there's no, there's been no really process in, one, the tourism community having a discussion about it, Main Street having a discussion about it, whether or not that would make an impact, I don't know, staff coming up with solutions on how to make money off of this, make it better, but the problem is, it's always been in departments that don't want it, and so people, so we haven't worked on those type of solutions. I don't think the trolley system has ever worked. I think it could, but, you know, at one time, we sold advertising space in it, at one time, we did a lot of different things. I think there could be, the truth is, is the most of the people that do use the trolley would have no problem paying for it. Okay? But what we've managed to do is, the only way we've been able to fund it is by saying it's for parking and using the parking funds, but it's not for parking, and it never has been. So if we think about what the trolleys have ever been used for and how to link that, I don't know if there's a solution to fix it. I don't, but I don't think we've ever looked. And I, so I wish there was some, at least if there was some evidence that says, well, we know that this wouldn't pencil if we tried any of these other things, but just to say we're going to get rid of it, even though we've spent, you know, a ton of money buying these things over the years, and it's probably the only thing that Oregon City has to market the city beyond the city, and it's done a great job of that. So the trolleys are doing something. I just, you know, so I'm a little, I'm not sure whether to advocate for it or not, okay? Because I know it doesn't pencil, and it never has, and so in that respect, it's easy to say, let's just ax it, but in my gut, knowing the tourism community and knowing what I do in terms of bringing people into this town, this trolley, these trolleys do serve a purpose, and they are well-known, and they create, you know, a visible kind of uniqueness of Oregon City, you know? So it's like saying, to me, it's equivalent to saying, you know, we're going to tear down the hoops of the Oregon Trail Interpretative Center, or we're going to take down the elevator. So I mean, that's an exaggeration to some degree, but they have become icons of the city to a degree, and there's value in that. I don't know if that value, you know, is worth what we're putting into it, but I think I would be more comfortable axing it if I felt there was more of a discussion about, okay, these are other possibilities, this is how we could possibly make it work, and if I was, if it was clear that it couldn't work any other way, then probably that's fine. I guess I was hoping more people would be here to talk about it and have a discussion about it. To be honest, I would have liked to see this be a work session, or I would have liked to see us as a city commission have a work session on how we could make the trolleys work better, and if nothing comes of it, then we get rid of them. But I think there are possible ways that we might be able to discuss it and see if anything comes of it. If it doesn't, then we let them go. But I have some brainstorms, and I know other people might, and I don't know. I also think it's, I think it's interesting about at least saving one. I know one of, at least one of them is pretty much gone in terms of, the oldest one is probably at the end of its life, probably was years ago.
Yeah, she's really, we've maintained her really well, but she would need to be replaced if we, to continue service the way that we've done it.
Right.
She would definitely need to be replaced.
Okay.
Margarita's in the best shape, the youngest.
I love that they have names and that they're she's. I think that's great.
Right.
And I do love the trolleys. My thing was when I looked at it, and it pencils out to about $120 per rider, is that correct? That's the figure that I came up with?
I would say it...
I can't remember where the ridership was last year.
Yeah, probably more in like the $10, $15 range isn't that we discussed?
We could figure that out.
Yeah, I got that from somebody, was it, I got that number from somebody.
It's about $10 a ride.
Is it? That's all? Okay.
That's all?
That's a lot! I actually thought it was more than that.
But speaking of the numbers, I would like to know unique numbers, not just people that get on from stop to stop, but how many actually are riding for one full day, not just...
We had 75 or 7800 riders last year, and it's very hard to divide it between two trolleys of the drivers to be able to communicate on who's getting on one and off and recognizing that they were already on.
Unless you get a stamp or something.
Yeah, it's probably less than half of that for unique, because a lot of them do get on and off, especially to have time to look at the falls and stuff.
One thing about, I mean, we have talked about this topic a little bit at some of the tourism meetings, but I, the link to parking, I could see it being used as, you know, parking as well. I could see it used where, you know, people that are wanting to get from museum to museum, and maybe it doesn't matter, because our museums aren't open either, but...
It's on art.
The, what I was saying earlier, really, is that the tourists, if you will, that want, would ride it, they would pay a few bucks to ride it. Then you say, okay, well, what about the people that are using it for parking? Well, they, and this is why I think it could, you know, a conversation with Main Street is, might be useful. If it was used more for the parking situation, you know, then you get, you go into a store and you get a, you know, or a restaurant, and you don't pay for the trolley, you know? So there's, you know, it gets people into the businesses, and I'm sure that those types of, you know, things are happening in other communities, or even just, you know, using the trolleys as just as city buses as well. But I guess, I just, I would have liked to have more of a discussion at the work session about, okay, these are the possibilities, and none of them pencil, so, okay, let's just, I feel like I need more than just this, that we don't want it.
I enjoy the trolleys as well. I've had them for a very long time. However, from a parking perspective and the use of parking fund, really, this, I see the direction that the city may need to take in the future of looking at something as the ODOT shuttle, smaller, easier to manage, contracted out, fast, quick, consistent, that's what increases the ridership to where it really services downtown and the employees, and can be used to offset and utilize some of those other parking areas to solve our parking problem.
I don't think we're ever going to solve the parking problem, but...
Probably not.
Thanks for being optimistic.
Absolutely.
But I would like to hear your other ideas, Rocky. I do think this is a work session, work should be brought up, and I am, I would like to have seen other options besides let's just get rid of it.
Can I, I've been on the menu here for a while. I was going to call you. Well, first of all, the staff, we made a presentation, a lengthy one, at the retreat, and I think we even had a moment of silence for the trolleys that wanted a suggestion. And so what we're faced with as staff is there is only limited data that's available to us. We know what these are costing us, we know how many riders, we know it's $11 to $15 in that range per trip, so even if we charge, we don't think that's a viable solution. And so this, at the retreat, the council said put it on a work session for a broad, free-ranging discussion, which we're having now. So we're right on schedule with what you wanted to do. That doesn't mean that a decision has to be made tonight or that we can't explore other options, but there are only, there's only so much data that we have available, and so you see a rather blunt recommendation.
Right.
But the staff was only looking at this, I think, as running this as an enterprise, can we sustain it? Because as Commissioner Smith mentioned, the other assets that we have, historic assets, mostly in our community that are tragically closed right now, and we sort of feel a responsibility, I think, as staff, to give you advice that doesn't get you in that same position with another program. So that's the irony, you know? The money we squander on one program could be going to open something else. So we just wanted to be blunt and honest, I think, about it. Is that something up on your perspective?
Yeah, I think also from a practical matter, the idea of exploring alternative uses for the trolley is a great idea, however, that's probably beyond staff expertise. You know, we're, none of us here in the staff know how to run a transportation system. So if we're really going to explore that or do that, that means probably having to hire a consultant, and then are we just putting more money down the rabbit hole?
Right.
You know, I don't know, but, and as it is right now, staff does spend a lot of time running the trolleys, managing a shuttle system, and quite honestly, we could be using that money for other things, and using our time for other things, too, but we just wanted to get an idea from the commission tonight. As we go into this budget, what we need to be doing, what we need to be budgeting, and we need to kind of have some direction fairly soon.
What I was going to do, we'll continue our dialogue among the commissioners, but were you going to speak to this specifically?
Yes.
As a representative of the TAC?
Right.
Okay, very good. Go ahead.
Okay. Well, my name is Bob LaSalle. I'm a citizen of Oregon City and a member of the Transportation Advisory Committee, and we've been trying for some time to get some discussion going about the trolley, and so I think just a little short history is appropriate. On January 21st of 2012, at the commission retreat, Commissioner Roth felt the city's trolleys have much potential and did not think riders would mind paying a nominal fee. Mr. Fraser asked Chief Conrad and Mr. Archer to conduct research, including cost estimates, to determine the feasibility and report back to the commission by April. April 10th of 2012, at the commission work session, under the trolley service cost assessment analysis, Nancy Bush gave an excellent presentation on the use of the trolleys, which included costs, revenue sources, limited use of the trolleys due to code restrictions, et cetera. Some of the statements in the written information were, "The intent of the trolley is to offset parking congestion in the downtown," and that's the key statement, "offset parking congestion in the downtown." Another statement, "Providing transportation services to businesses out of the downtown service area may be a good conversation for the TAC." I couldn't find anywhere that the TAC had been approached about this matter at all. Another comment, "There were over 10,000 visitors to the downtown area last year," and that was during the Oregon City, not West Lynn, Arch Bridge construction.
Thank you for making that point.
Mayor Neely expressed his concern of the reduced transportation available to our citizens due to the reduction of permit services, and he also mentioned possible discussions with the TAC. Everyone agreed that a nominal fee would be acceptable. Now, that was an excellent discussion, a lot of time was given to the subject, but have we gone any further?
No.
Doesn't look like it. May 15th, 2012, at a TAC meeting, we asked staff to look into further use of the trolleys. June 19th, 2012, at a TAC meeting, we again expressed our concerns of the underuse of the trolleys. September 18th, 2012, at a TAC meeting, the trolley discussion was put off until November. November 20th of 2012, at the TAC meeting, we were given a presentation of the downtown parking, but nothing about the trolleys. December 12th, in the commission joint work session with Main Street Oregon City Board, among other suggestions, Commissioner Polly referred to the shuttle to the parking lots, and other items mentioned were vision for downtown, downtown events, facade improvements and signage, downtown art projects, and that's just a few. All these are for naught if the retail customer has parking spaces taken up by downtown employees, and the image of difficult downtown parking remains. January 11th, 2013, at the commission annual retreat, on the agenda was the trolley system to be presented by Chief Conrad, however, I can't comment about that because neither the minutes nor the video are available online.
Of the retreat?
Right.
There is no video, and the minutes are complicated, and it just takes a while to do the retreat minutes.
I understand. I wasn't criticized, I just...
I just was wondering.
There is no video.
January 15th, 2013, at a TAC meeting, John Lewis reported that the city commission asked staff to look harder at a shuttle service. They realized there are inefficiencies with the trolley. So I guess I can flashback to a year when I first started this little history, and so we're still in the same place. So now, we're approaching a new summer tourist season, and once again, we have no plan for a better trolley or shuttle system. The system may not pencil out completely from a cost standpoint, but the benefits to downtown are not easily measurable. How can you measure the value of erasing the reputation of downtown Oregon City being unfriendly to shoppers due to the lack of convenient parking? And how can you measure the increased revenue for your downtown businesses as that reputation goes away? Nancy Bush stated, "They receive a ton of ridership from John Storm Park, the Riverside Hotel, and the RV Park. Whatever it costs, it's certainly cheaper than a multi-story parking structure." So here's some of our ideas. Offer free parking and shuttle service for downtown employees at the end of the Oregon Trail Interpretative Center. There are approximately 190 parking spaces available there. Run the shuttle every 15 to 20 minutes from 6:30 a.m. to 9:30 a.m., and again from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. That should open up many permit and metered parking spaces. The businesses and property owners would eliminate some parking expenses, and monthly passes could be provided. Charge a nominal fee of $1 to $2 for all other riders for a round trip. That fee would generate a large amount of revenue during the tourist season from those tons of riders from John Stone Park, Riverside Hotel, and the RV Park. I don't know how many tons of dollar bills that would be.
A lot.
Offer advertising inside and outside the trolleys or shuttles, whatever you come up with. Interior ads range from $20 to $125 per ad per four-week period. Exterior ads range from $150 to $4,500 per ad per four-week period. A conservative figure of $3,450 per four-week period could be generated. Now I get into this little controversial area here. Eliminate 50% of the blue and green permit spaces and convert them to meters. That would generate another $2,928 per month of parking revenue. That's over and above what you're now receiving for the permit fees. Now, some people have advocated completely eliminating all of the blue and green spaces, but I'm not that, not quite that wild. Try to get money from organizations such as the Clackamas Heritage Partners and the Oregon City Tourism Council. Coming up close now, the metro enhancement grant applications are due May 1st. What better way to enhance tourism? Up to this point, I've only addressed the advantages to downtown. There's another whole subject out there, and that is transportation available to the rest of the city. As a member of the South End Concept Plan Committee, I can't tell you how many times I've had people mention the poor transportation system in that part of the city, and unfortunately, especially hard hit are the physically and mentally impaired and those on limited income. And the mayor's expressed his concerns about that also. So after all the ticket sales, advertising sales, grants, and trolley rentals are added up, but may still not add up. For the good of the cities, the trolleys may have to be subsidized. Not everything can be operated at a profit. You don't charge for police calls, you don't charge for fire calls. The big picture, it really needs to be looked at. Finally, we on the TAC want to let you know that we want to help. Mayor and all the commissioners have signed on at one point or another. The downtown community has done a wonderful job of cleaning up their act. Now it's time to get as many customers down there as possible and provide the citizens of Oregon City good transportation options. If it can be known that downtown parking is good, just think about how much more vibrant that community can be. It's time to do something. There's been a lot of talk and no action. So let's establish a timeline and forge ahead. Just this afternoon, I got a whole bunch of letters from back in 2007 when they were going for a grant for another trolley or two, and we've got letters from the Chamber of Commerce, Oregon City Downtown Business Coalition, Don Slack, who owns Settlers Corner, Oregon City Public Works, in fact, that was Nancy Bush's letter.
I would like to see all those.
And Mayor Alice Norris, and an Oregonian article, all of that, I just had them provided me today, but, you know, I can just see it now. I can just see it now. A brightly lit and fanciful downtown Oregon City, and carolers strolling down the sidewalks and gaily attired shoppers with bags just full of Christmas presents, and all because they had easy access to parking downtown. Can't you just see it? That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, and I have copies of my little dissertation.
Very good. Thank you.
Nancy, and the chief, and the commissioners, and the Fraser.
Bob, when you put this together, was there actually a TAC discussion then at that point?
We had, not on all these details.
No.
But on the issue of the trolley, and then I've had discussions on most of these. I'd like to take credit for all these ideas.
Because you had mentioned that a lot of times, it didn't come onto the agenda, so I guess you took it on yourself to get this out there, and I'm wondering if you could have actually a TAC meeting that's just devoted to this.
Or a work session where we meet with TAC.
Yeah, well, maybe they could have their own work session first, and then we could join at a later point.
I'm sure that could be arranged. I'm not the chairman, of course, I could talk to Blaine, or I could bring it up in the next TAC meeting, because we did devote one whole meeting last year to the transportation system plan.
Was Blaine the right person to use? He might, he might think that everybody that would use the trolley should have a bicycle.
Well, actually, I talked to him, actually, last night, he called me, and he's getting very sick. He wanted to be here to give me moral support, but he said he might not, because he's pretty sick.
Well, you did a great job.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you. Well, go ahead with our commission discussion.
I'm going to have to leave, because I have a...
I appreciate your coming.
CIC, my last committee review meeting, and I have the keys to the room.
I love your historical, your historical references here. That is very helpful. Thank you so much.
Hey, Bob, real quickly, though, before you leave, I just want to make it clear, we had it on the TAC agenda, there was, so it was about the same time that we, that the city commission and that letter that went to the county about parking, and that was when the request was made to add it to the TAC agenda. That was the response, when we talked to the city manager and manager group, that was kind of the response to what was, you know, how we were going to be dealing with the trolleys. So it's been on the agenda, it's just hasn't been fully vetted, yeah.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Carol Polly, I got you on next.
Okay. Thanks again, Bob.
You're welcome.
This information's great.
Thanks for your time.
And I think that TAC does... And I think that TAC does need to be included. This is a big problem and we need everybody thinking towards it. Collaborative effort is definitely needed on this situation. The trolley, I see it as kind of a twofold issue with a lot of other layers too. The trolley's expensive and it, but it's an existing resource. So how can we use it better and how can it meet the needs of parking? And we have lack of transportation. David Frazier and John Lewis and I, we met with Anil McFarlane and Dan Marchant of Triment a few weeks ago to talk about the lack of transportation with the South End line being cut in the South End area on South End Road. And just that there is a lack of transportation to the outer areas. And originally, when I looked at this trolley problem, that's what I thought of. I thought, okay, we have an existing resource that has low ridership. How can we, you know, how can we expand the program so we can actually get to those voids in the community and provide a resource that is not there, that is lacking? And then looking into it deeper and seeing how expensive it was for the trolley to provide that, it's like, can we think outside the box and think about either contracting out or what can we use the trolley for if it is feasible? So I think another work session on it and having TAC be included and try to think of ways that we can solve multiple problems. It's parking, transportation, and lowering, if the trolleys are kept, lowering the cost. How can we lower the cost of the trolleys? By either increase ridership fee. A lot of this was brought out in Bob's letter and I just think they're good ideas to look at.
Good thinking. Mr. Smith?
Well, I agree with a lot of comments. And I understand it's a drain on our staff and managing advertising would be a huge issue for just putting advertising on the trolley. Who's paying and who's not? I get that. But I do think we need to have more meetings with our stakeholders like downtown, like the museums and the historical group that Rocky referred to, because I don't think they've been included in a lot of this discussion. And I think it does impact them. I do want to know though, if we could get the number that we pay Triment for service? Because I think that's a key factor. That could provide us with a whole different direction for transportation for our citizens.
Thank you. I got myself on next, a couple of comments. One is that I don't, I don't think we can expect the museum industry itself to provide support for this. The McLaughlin House is going down to two days a week.
Well, absolutely, but they should be in the discussion.
No, no, they should be in the discussion. The point I think I'm trying to make here is that most of these museums are operating in a limited time span. And that may not necessarily be bad if we're considering other uses. It may be the times that they could use the services different than when the general public could use it. And I think exploring something with Triment, of course, they've got their unions to deal with and so forth. Maybe there is some service that we can provide that they no longer do if it's not, if it's nothing more than offering a shuttle to our more distal neighborhoods to the transit center. So I think, I think these are issues that can be explored and I think it'd be good to get these maybe itemized and presented to the TAC. Some of the ideas we're just throwing out here. Mr. Smith?
What is the blue book for our trolley? How much are we going to get if we get rid of these things?
We actually, we actually had them appraised. And it was just, from what I understand, an over-the-phone appraisal from actually the people, I think, we, that brokered the deal for us when we originally bought them. And I think the most recent one, which is Marguerite, was around 90,000 we can get for. And the other ones had, were, had less worth than that one. But I think altogether, I want to say around 150, 170, but I don't have those figures right in front of me for all three of them.
Actually, I think, chief, I think it was, Marguerite was actually around 80, maybe slightly more. And I think Helen, they appraised over the phone at about 40 and Josephine about 50. So, yeah, real close.
Okay.
Mr. Ruh?
Well, I have two things. I, probably of all the commissioners, I ride the trolley the most because it stops outside my house.
Well, that's what you need to do. We get.
That's not official. But I often pay too. So I see how few people are, and they don't take dogs. Yeah, it's got a problem there. But, but I see how few people are on it. A lot of times, I'm the only person on that trolley. The other thing that is a concern to me is the terrain around here. And I was doing the tours last year and on a trolley that couldn't make the hills in West Lynn. And I don't think it could make South End Road and those things routinely because we had to not go where we were going to go because the trolley couldn't make it. So I don't know how feasible it would be to put it into that neighborhood.
Well, I think it's a good question. I guess my only comment is we, I think we have to look at Central Point, Port Low and South End as a, you know, possible route and it needn't be as steep as it is going just directly all the way up to South End. So, I mean, there might be some mechanism, but I have no idea. Commissioner Mump?
I just had two thoughts that I didn't address. And one was storage of the trolleys. Does the city not own any facilities that the trolleys could be stored in? Because that would be a big chunk right there. 30,000 that we pay to Norm Stewart.
Yeah, that's the storage trolleys.
We've looked at alternative places to store them. We even thought about storing them outside the city. And we found a place in, I believe in Milwaukee, which was significantly cheaper. But then there's the, the cost and the time going back and forth again. And that's the extra fuel cost and things like that. And it just wasn't convenient to do that. And also, just, if I can interrupt just for a second, we were talking about, when Bob was talking about parking congestion, this is good news. Our parking study, our parking plan is working now. Now that the bridges reopened and the redirection through downtown and everything, our parking complaints have nosedived. It is working. The plan is working. We don't have that congestion down there that we used to do. So I'm not sure that, why we might want to justify a lot of reasons for continuing the trolley use these. I don't think the elimination of congestion, downtown parking congestion is really a value in anymore.
Right, right. No, I would agree. The other point I wanted to make was the money that we pay Triment to service our community, you know, I mean, maybe we should think about what Camby and Wilsonville is doing. I mean, really.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a very broad topic and a whole different topic. Because the purpose of your trolleys seems to me has evolved.
Yes.
And it's evolved a lot as a result of work on the downtown, going back to the two-way Main Street. And as the chief just pointed out, the, the purpose of them or the use of them or the benefit of them has evolved. Ridership is really low for what it is. The cost is really high and the effectiveness to achieve the goal of improving the parking situation has really, doesn't exist anymore. So we have, now we have other reasons. I mean, if we want to keep the trolleys around because we value them and we, we have some sort of difficult to quantify value on those trolleys, that, that is a decision that can be made. It's very difficult for me as your, as your manager to recommend that you keep these for another season. You've got, the ridership is so low compared to the cost. If we were running government remotely like a business, we would have to make a hard decision about these trolleys.
Which I understand that. And maybe Triment, it should be a future topic that we have and what that looks like. That might be a good discussion. As far as the trolleys, I understand that they don't pay for themselves. I understand all that. I would be hesitant to just cut it off without any notice to our stakeholders.
Absolutely. We would expect that your direction here would be to engage the stakeholders more.
Yes.
We also expect, as we said in the retreat, that there are going to be people that really like these trolleys and they're going to say, keep them at any cost.
Yes.
That's what we think, some people are going to say that. Somebody mentioned provide free shuttle service. We don't have any, we don't have any free things.
Well.
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. It's called the elevator.
No, we pay. We pay for that.
Well, that's true. We do pay for it.
Somebody said they don't pay for police calls, but we have, we pay for that out of our general fund tax dollars. So there isn't, we don't do, we don't have free.
There is nothing free. And I think, and it could be.
That's a hard reality.
I might be showing my age, but I think we should offer free parking to employees for Main Street areas and they did not take advantage of it. So I don't know that that's a good answer.
All right. We have, we have permit parkings that fairly distant and some down on 12th Street that are not used or hardly used.
I mean, we've already got lots of good ideas.
I agree with the chief, there's a lot of parking, if you go, if you go just north of, north of 10th Street, there's usually parking spaces available. People just don't like to walk.
Right. And I am not advocating for trolleys or against, because I do think like you, I have to think about the money and our citizens are paying for it. I just don't want it to get cut off at the knees and not the stakeholders be involved in this.
What I would like to suggest is that we, Carol, I'll get to you, that we're going to go ahead and let the Traffic Advisory Committee have a study session devoted strictly to this issue and then we can join them in a subsequent study session. But obviously, Bob put together a lot of information there and I really appreciate. Carol?
Yes, if it is decided that we don't have the trolleys, I want to make sure that the parking is still addressed and that the transportation throughout the city is addressed. Since it was originally part of the program to help mitigate parking. I just want to make sure that those are addressed and the trolleys just don't go away and then those items aren't addressed. Because I think they're very pressing to our city, whether it's a shuttle to provide people that use the courthouse into downtown to free up parking for retail or, you know, whatever that is. If it's contracting out to provide service to the outlying areas, I think we need to make sure not to lose sight of that. I would hate to just lose the trolleys and not get that piece. Because the whole idea for me is using that money, using, you know, resources that we pull for that money into something that's actually usable by more people in our community. Something that's going to benefit more people.
I'm going to ask a question, just basically that I've lost my, my concept of what dimensions were there. I presume that area that's under the train station could not be used? We've got that, we've got that area where the train station is out of the floodplain. It can't be used.
Too short?
It's too short. Yeah, that's right. Yeah.
Yeah.
Since I banged my head on most everything, I think it is too short. Anyway, yeah, I think maybe that's the direction we're recommending is to actually let the Traffic Advisory Committee have a, have a separate work session that deals with only this particular issue and then we get back together with that.
Well, and engage the other groups in our community too, like the historic, don't they meet monthly, Rocky?
Well, yeah, but I, I mean, if we had, if we had some sort of a work session, I don't think we have to.
No, but I mean, have that conversation with them.
Right. Well, I think, I think we should, I think that the Traffic Advisory Committee should extend the invitation to any of the stakeholders. And then those stakeholders can also be involved in the joint.
Okay, some brainstorming.
Right.
Mayor?
Yes?
If we're taking it to the TAC, I'm still a little confused. It sounds like what you'd like the TAC to address is the shuttle or, you know, transportation into at least our downtown, possibly elsewhere. So, but if, so the trolley component, let's just say, that type of vehicle, is, is, is this, is this commission feeling pretty strongly that that's the type of?
Not necessarily. I mean, that might be something that comes out of the study session itself.
I'm not anyways.
Okay. So a different kind of vehicle, for instance, that maybe wouldn't require indoor parking?
Right, right.
I also think that as, as this discussion continues, obviously, it's not going to be resolved anytime quickly.
Right.
So we might have to contemplate.
It should, it needs to be. I mean.
My point is, is what I was going to say is that our budget meetings are next month.
Yeah.
So.
And you're planning for two years now, right?
Correct. And so do we? I need some direction from the commissioner whether or not we should budget for a trolley for this season, maybe if not for the next season. At some point, I need to know just for budgeting purposes whether or not we need to do that.
I can give you my opinion. My opinion is budget for this year, if we don't do it, then that gives you a little cushion. But in my opinion, you should budget for one year because we may, and then discontinue it after that. I don't know what anybody else feels, but I mean, it's not what staff wants, but.
It's not what we, it's not necessarily what we want. We're not the ones who want to. We're making a professional recommendation. This is a values decision on what you guys want to do, okay?
I just don't want to just go in two months for that.
Understand that.
Yeah, my, my opinion is from, you know, business standpoint, there's one conclusion, but the community outreach has got to be done, I think. And it needs to be delved into deeper and it kind of needs to be a community decision. The trolleys were part of our community. So I think that the one year is what I would lean towards, budgeting one year.
I don't know that you can get what needs to be done in a couple of months.
Yeah, and I think the other important thing to remember too, and for a further work session is, it's really three different parts. It's a shuttle system that hasn't been operated in years. It is a tourism route, which it has primarily functioned as, and then starting something new, which is transportation. So even our three trolleys cannot do all of those.
Yeah, no, no, we understand that. I think the transportation was going to be like a Triment issue that we were going to discuss, not trolley.
I'm sure there's a lot of complicated aspects of that as well.
Sure.
One of the benefits, one of the benefits about operating the trolley system now is that it's a short season. It's only 70 days with one trolley that doesn't work anymore.
Right.
Extending that season is going to put more wear and tear on the other two trolleys we have, which probably will require at some point for keeping the trolleys to buy another trolley.
Well, we don't want to go that way, but I think whatever season.
That's, that's a real concern because I know the one that was having problems last year, the driver said there was major problems, it wouldn't make it through another season.
I don't think we actually drive Helen anymore. That just sits there unless, in case of emergency, one of the other ones are down.
We drive, people come to Oregon City, the trolleys are Oregon City's best attraction. The people come simply to ride the trolley. However, they want to ride Helen or Marguerite that look like real trolleys. Josephine runs, she doesn't get the ridership. Visitors wait to ride the one that is working. So we always have one as a backup because you have constant maintenance when you have a seven day, when you're operating seven days.
If we get rid of the oldest one, that pays for part of the season. I mean, if we're, if we're not, if we're not using, if we're, if we have one that's basically our, you know, the, the oldest one that's not really being used and is a backup, you know, if, if we have some way of getting rid of it now, because it doesn't seem like it's going to be useful to us that much longer as it is, let's say that that gets us, I don't know what you're saying, 20 or 30,000 maybe, who knows?
Yeah.
That's half the summer.
Well, if you could get 30,000, that would pay for parking and for storage.
Right. But I'm just saying, that's an option to get through the year.
Yes.
Nancy, can we run in seven days and two shuttles?
You can't, you couldn't continue the services you have. You'd have to take it down to one 45-minute route instead of two trolleys on a continuous loop. And what we found, that's what got the numbers up, was having the two because people don't want to wait. They want to feel like they can get on and off and not have to wait 45 minutes for something else to come along. So I would suspect that you could only run one, you would see your numbers go down. But in order to have one run seven days a week or reduce even the days, you would have to have them down for maintenance and for cleaning and.
Well, we might have to look at the season.
That's the thing, I mean, if we look at the fact that the McLaughlin House is only open these days and the visitor center's open only these days, a combination of for this summer, cutting down the route and, I don't know, it's, it could get us through this year while we discuss it. And if, if the committee wants it, then we figure out how to move forward. And if they don't, then we're done. But I, I think we could probably get through the summer, one, either doing that or shrinking down the route or, you know, if, if the tourism community wants it, then we have the ability to get, I mean, we have grants, a lot of the tourism grants have paid for a portion of the trolley in the past and probably. the past and probably still could, you know, to get through this next summer. I don't know if that's possible. Maybe they don't think it's important. I actually would have liked to see more people from that community here tonight for this. So, I don't know if the lack of comments on this is because no one cares or what. I don't know.
Maybe that's a statement in itself.
But I think, well, I think to some degree, the people in the, this is, actually, I think this is more the case. The people in the tourism community that have also already been asking about the trolley have been pretty much told the trolleys aren't happening anymore.
Right.
So.
So, they figure.
They haven't, I mean, they just assume it's gone already before we even had a meeting. So, I think that's maybe a little bit of why that's happening. But, I don't know. It's a thought.
Okay. David, it's back to you.
I just want to make sure I'm clear on what we're going to do. So, we're going to set up these various stakeholder group meetings. We're going to go ahead and budget for one more season of trolleys. The second season, we're not going to budget for it or?
Correct.
Is that correct? Is that where we are?
As far as I'm concerned.
Okay.
I don't know about anybody else.
Because in these stakeholder meetings, I just want to say that if you were, so there will be a savings. Let's just put it this way. When the second year of your biennial budget comes out, there will be money in there. And what I want to say to you is, there are a lot of assumptions being made. We're all sort of flying in the dark on this whole discussion about transportation. Because TriMet is the only agency that has any real hard data that we can rely on besides our low ridership and we know how many, we know what the trolleys are costing us, that part. The other components of transportation, we don't, the staff doesn't have very good data on that. So, it's very difficult for us to make informed recommendations to you. But, for example, and I mentioned this, I believe at the retreat, if in that second year, let's say we have 30,000 or 40,000 dollars and we decide to do some transportation analysis with a consultant to find out what exactly is the need, then some of the money that is saved from the trolley, and I would submit to you not all of it because it's not a moneymaker. So, you don't want to overcommit somewhere else and then create an expectation that can't be, can't be met. But take a portion of that money and then say, if we want to augment parking or transportation or whatever the problem is, let's first identify what that problem is with crystal clear clarity and then take some of the money that we save from this trolley decision and augment that service area with that money, perhaps on a contracted basis, because we can control that cost. We can budget for, if we have 30,000 or 40,000, we can say, that's how much service we're going to buy. Do you remember how effective the ODOT shuttle was when the Oregon City Bridge was under reconstruction? So, we could do something like that, but we'd like to make sure that when we use that money, it's effective. What we don't want to do is have another system and have 7,000 people riding it in a season.
I think we all agree on that.
Well, the thing is, I mean, I think talking about the overall transit capability within the city is important because the only thing we're really serving is essentially a 9th Street, 7th Street, Fifth Street corridor. That's what we've got. And so, what, it means probably two thirds or three quarters of our residents are not being served.
Right.
And they're all paying into TriMet taxes.
Yes.
And the question, I think the question, and I don't think anybody's terribly optimistic of the near-term future of some of those lines being reestablished with the current problems that TriMet has had.
Another example, since you brought that up, one of the things the director brought up with Commissioner Pauli and I was, and of course, I'm a little bit lukewarm on this when somebody who we're paying taxes to says, "You can pay more."
Yes, we can pay you as more.
But you could supplement or augment your existing TriMet service with, I think they would be willing to entertain a separate service contract.
What we do have to maintain is, of course, a transit center and also our connection with the college. I think there's a critical corridor that TriMet has to serve.
Right. But I want to make sure we're getting full value for the amount we're paying them now.
That's right.
Before we start agreeing to pay them additional.
Yeah.
Because they were more than willing, in fact, I would say eager, to talk about a separate supplemental contract.
Of course.
And Carol and I were less enthusiastic about that. But we haven't really studied it. And that may be an option that you want to take part of your trolley money and say, "Well, we want to enhance our bus service a little bit from TriMet."
Or somebody else, not necessarily TriMet.
Or somebody else, like you mentioned. That's a very good point because the number one thing we got from them besides the opportunity to have a supplemental contract was the concern that they have about their labor impasses because that is a big deal for them and that's really escalating their costs. It's the reason they're having to cut routes and stuff is because they've got a real conflict with their labor groups over there.
Absolutely.
And it's costing both sides a lot of money.
Absolutely. So, it doesn't necessarily have to be TriMet. I want that on the table.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Thank you.
With that, I think we'll go to our next item. Unless you have something you still want to come back to here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, enjoy.
On what?
I'm officially on vacation right now.
Okay, good.
I'll see everyone Monday.
Enjoy.
All right.
Film and media audits.
So, Mayor Eric Underwood has been working on this along with my assistant Katie Riggs and representatives of the county and can't resist the opportunity to highlight that this real positive interaction between Eric's office and county staff was going on all along the BTOP Trail. So, just because we couldn't get one thing done didn't mean we weren't getting some other good things done. So.
Absolutely.
We have guests here tonight to join us from the county and appreciate their patience and their perseverance working with our staff. So, I'm going to turn it over to Eric.
I'm sure the county staff are familiar.
Are familiar with patients.
And I might add that I think we're working pretty well together. Wouldn't you think so? But yeah, like David said, we've been partnering together to capitalize on this emerging industry. That's how we like to classify it, film and media. You know, the state has offered, throughout the years, offered incentives for production companies to come out of California and film here in Oregon. They've been quite successful. We feel like we could capitalize on that too. It does bring new jobs to the city, to our area. And it's a whole industry. It's broken down into different types of companies and businesses that all participate in film production and media production. So, we see that and I, like I said, I've been working with the award-winning Catherine Comer and Jamie John in developing a uniform or a uniform permitting process. And along with that, we've also developed an ordinance that would support that permitting process and a fee structure. So, I've invited Catherine and Jamie to come here tonight to present a little bit more about the program and talk about how it'd be beneficial for Oregon City.
Go ahead and introduce yourselves. But usually we just say, introduce yourselves, but give us a little background if you would.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the commission. I'm Catherine Comer, manager of business and economic development for Clackamas County.
And I'm Jamie Johnk. I'm running a coordinator for business and economic development in the county.
Thank you.
We are indeed excited about our partnership with Oregon City and we have been working with Eric on a variety of projects for some time now. The film and media production industry is one of those projects that we started looking at the county about a year and a half ago to assist businesses that were coming into the county wanting to film throughout Clackamas County, particularly for us, a lot of request to film in county parks. So, we thought we would take a hard look at what the economic development opportunities were in this industry and what the impact was on Clackamas County. So, we actually added this to our economic landscape analysis. And our economic landscape analysis had at that time identified 10 key clusters in Clackamas County by which the majority of businesses fall into one of those clusters so that we could identify what businesses are working in the county and where we can expand our efforts in economic development, resources and activities. As it turned out, the film and media production cluster not only rose to be one of our 11 clusters in the county as an emerging cluster, but it also immediately was a key cluster. Many of those businesses, as you all know, are in Oregon City, many of them in downtown Oregon City, that are part of this important cluster. So, one of those industries is the film and video industry and it services a lot of support businesses. So, we met with producers, we met with industry representatives, we met with businesses, we met with state representatives, we met with folks who were coming to our community from outside such as California and asked them, why would they locate here, what would help them locate here, and what could we do to make Clackamas County more film-friendly? So, first, we did the study and looked at what were the impacts on our county wide. So, we broke it down by different communities and looked at what different films were being filmed. And I think our next, the next slide shows some of the projects that have been filmed in the county. So, we met with representatives from not only national, regional, international production firms, but local site selectors whose job it is to find sites for filming. And we said, what can we do to make your job easier? And resounding to them was saying that just that, we needed to make it easier. And top of the line was the permitting process. For example, two of the top filming opportunities that we've had in the county, the TNT television show Leverage and Grimm NBC, which is still on, came to us and said that if they wanted to film a television show or a commercial, right, and they wanted to film in multiple communities, they would have to go to one community and get a permit, go to the next community and get a permit, go to the next one. They said, if you could make it easy for permitting, then that would by far make Clackamas County more attractive along with the assets that we already have. I mean, we all know that we have a beautiful county. We have the agriculture. We're close to the urban. We have the mountain. So, we're naturally very attractive for filming opportunities. So, capitalizing on that, we created a program that was a one-stop film permitting process. And so, Jamie Johnk has been managing that. She's going to tell you a little bit about how we came up at the county with a program that we thought would make it easier. And then we call it the one-stop film permitting.
Thank you, Catherine. So, as Catherine said, we have been doing our outreach and our due diligence to find out how to best support this industry and how to promote it and make it even bigger and better and more attractive in Clackamas County. And so, we've got to looking at what is working in other states, other regions, other nations. Big problem. Nobody else is really working in quite this fashion. So, we, of course, being the creative body that we are in Clackamas County Economic Development, we said, let's make this happen then. And using a model that they use in Louisiana of all places with their parishes under jurisdictional authority, they do have a process where you can go to one place and you can get a permit for one of their multiple parishes. But we wanted to do a little more than that. We wanted to make this a process county-wide. So, we're going to be taking a different approach, getting not only our Board of County Commissioners behind this by adopting an ordinance similar to what was prepared.
Thank you. So, getting an ordinance adopted, establishing our ordinance policies and procedures, because we did not have those in Clackamas County. So, we wanted to be able to create something that will work for our purposes as well as that of our municipalities. And then developing this online permitting application. And then there's a Real Scout database that the Governor's Office on film and video has. And this was really an opportunity for us as well. We got on there and started looking at our Real Scout database. And this is where they house all of our sites or potential sites that could be used in films and movies. So, when you have a scout looking at a place to film in Clackamas County, for instance, they're going to get on there and they're going to say, "I want a building that looks like this or has this criteria." And they're going to get all these lists. Well, we found out that the largest majority of the 538 sites in Clackamas County are either not actually in Clackamas County or really outdated. Arts Cafe, anyone remember that?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, that's what's still on there, is the Green Arts Cafe instead of Still House. Still House is a very marketable, very cute pub that could be really great for a movie shoot. But we've got outdated information. So, we just brought an intern on board and we really are knocking out that database, getting it up to date with good, accurate information and then covering our bases as partners, not only in our communities, but also as a county, saying we're getting the permissions needed to get those sites on location. Because one of the challenges are is that if we have a house or a property on there that doesn't have the right permission in place, we could potentially be promoting something that nobody said it was okay to promote. We certainly don't want to do that.
Is this Carver School?
Yes, it is. Yes. And we actually had a great opportunity to put that in front of a prospective filmmaker, independent filmmaker recently. So, great opportunity. So, yes, we had ordinance created and the Board of County Commissioners adopted it last November. Our permitting process is in the process and we're working on our database. So, this is a one-dimensional version of what an online creation is going to look like for a film and media permit. And what this really represents is an opportunity for a website that will be linked on all of our individual websites county-wide. So, whether they're looking to film in Oregon City and they bring up Oregon City's film page first on the internet, or Clackamas Counties, or Estacadas, or whatever community they're going to be pulling up, all links will take them back to this application. And on there, they'll be able to identify what areas in Clackamas County simply by clicking a box. The wonderful hover method will be, if they are hovering over Oregon City, they'll be able to click on Oregon City's name and pull up what the fees and processes are. So, they'll be able to go straight to the Oregon City link to pull up any information. And then clicking the Oregon City box, Camby box and West Lynn box, they'll fill out the applicant information, production titles, and then they'll fill out a section specific to those communities they're going to propose to film in. And then, once they hit submit, all of the jurisdictions are then notified individually. Eric, if he will be the point of contact, we'll use Eric since he's right here. He's been a great partner. He will receive notification that George Production Company is going to be filming March 4th and 5th in Oregon City and they'll need these things. Eric then will know to follow up with this production company. Estacada will be notified separately that they're going to be filming their community. The nice thing is, we will be notified with every production for every community and then we are taking charge of that opportunity and of saying, "Okay, Eric, did you get this? Do you need anything from us? How can we help? If there's missing information, we'll do the outreach to the production company." This is where not only we're providing that business assistance, which we are so well-known for in our department, but also a great opportunity to collect data, to add to our economic landscape information, to see who's filming and where, and also to help with some regulation issues that we've had. We had a production that was taking place outside of the city limits of Milwaukee. It was one of those MTV real-life things that they do. And this poor lady called just distraught because she's like, "I don't know who to call. Milwaukee said it's not their jurisdiction. These people are blocking my space. I can't get in my house." Well, there was, nobody knew they were filming here because there wasn't a permitting process in place. It was unincorporated Clackamas County. We had no jurisdictional authority. We didn't even know they were filming there. With this process in place, we can at least say, "Oh, yeah, well, this is MTV Production Company and here's the contact name. We can get ahold of them on your behalf." Unfortunately, in this instance, the young lady could, her only recourse was calling law enforcement and asking them to assist her with this because it was harassing behavior. But under this method, we would have some kind of enforcement to at least have somebody to call a production company. Or if we did have to call law enforcement, we also have that opportunity available as well. So, this is really a great, multiple-use mechanism. The other communities are supporting it. Oregon City's been a great partner. Eric actually has been, Eric and Katie both have been working with us on the very beginning of development of the ordinance. And we're really excited and pleased to have you guys all as partners on this. So, the process going here forward is, oh, I just explained all of this, didn't I?
Let's look at the pictures.
The actual pictures on the bottom far left, we were asked constantly, is this going to deter production companies from wanting to film in Clackamas County if you always require this permit? And really, this has actually promoted Clackamas County as a place who's really taken the initiative to create some kind of a mechanism to help our producers through the process. So, we've had a number of commercials be interested in shooting in Clackamas County. We're working with them on sites and locations. And the one on the left corner with the gentleman talking was a filming out in Boring. These folks were from New York State of all places. They flew all the way out here to the west coast to film in Boring, Oregon. It was amazing. It was great energy, great production. College Humor Production was the name of the company. So, you can kind of get the gist of what they produce. But it was, it's a Coca-Cola vitamin water commercial. And it was really exciting to work with this group. They just so loved it. They're looking at another production in April that they want to bring back to. But it was, it's a Coca-Cola vitamin water commercial. And it was really exciting to work with this group. They just so loved it. They're looking at another production in April that they want to bring back to Oregon because they just love the way we worked. And of course, Clackamas County is their first choice. And then one on the far right is an actual Hewlett-Packard production that was done in Clackamas County offices. Not only are we, for the first time, creating and adopting an ordinance to help us promote this industry in Clackamas County, we're also allowing the use of some of our facilities for it. You know, we really want to step up and say, hey, you know, we want to stand behind this opportunity for our county as well as our communities. So one important thing to point out with our permit process is we're going to house the online application. We're developing it. We're going to make it available county-wide to all of our jurisdictions. Like I said, all of the jurisdictions and the designated contact in each of those areas will be notified once an application is processed. But the most important thing is the local jurisdiction is responsible for issuing their permit in whatever format they're going to use. Some have already pre-prepared permits that they want to use. Other jurisdictions are going to simply use the permit application, the bottom part of the form, the in-or-office portion of it. They can use that as the permit. And they will also collect all of the associated fees for production. While Clackamas County's not at this point going to, we have no way to collect the funds at this point. We're hoping somewhere along the line, we'll be able to do an online payment system. But the local jurisdictions receive all of their associated fees. We're not attaching a fee, application fee, processing fee or nothing or anything to it. We're just providing the service to promote the opportunity to our communities and to the industry. Want to hit the next steps?
So what we have brought to you is, again, what we have done through Clackamas County in terms of examples of the ordinance that the Board of County Commissioners adopted for unincorporated Clackamas County and have submitted that to Eric and worked with him to, as an example for something that you may want to adopt. But again, we just want to emphasize the county's role is to support whatever fee structure that you have, whatever ordinance, whatever rules and regulations that you have for filming within your city limits. We want to support that. Again, we don't charge a fee for this. Our role is only trying to gather information and disseminate that information. Because many times, we get phone calls and we get these right now on a regular basis. Every week, we're filling two to three calls. And commercials or independent filmmakers will call and they don't know where they want to film. They'll just say, I want a historic downtown, or I want an office building, or I want a jail. That was our latest one that they wanted. And so our role is to disseminate that information and send it out to all of our partners and say, here's the opportunities. So that's what we just want to emphasize, that our role is just to support and get the information out.
I think in some circles, we're known as Clackywood. Is that still the case?
We are. We were in a production company last year and they were, we saw on their whiteboard, they had the word Clackywood. And we said, what is that? Don't you guys know that you're referred to as Clackywood because of your efforts up here? So we've kind of adopted that. We're happy to take any questions, if you have any questions for us.
Thank you. We think we have great opportunities here in Oregon City, of course, and perhaps have more as our efforts on the river proceed and so on.
Yes, absolutely.
How many opportunities has Oregon City had? Probably Nancy?
A lot.
A lot.
Well, we've had quite a few shoots with GRIM. They film at the Blue Heron Site.
Right.
And also Clackamas Park. Leverage is filmed here once or twice, I believe.
And then what do we pay right now? What do they pay us right now?
They pay us, I think it's a nominal fee. I believe it's a thousand dollars if I'm not mistaken. Katie's been managing that program.
You think it's a thousand?
I believe it's just a thousand.
But there's also, I mean, when they tie up streets or need police and so forth, there's additional.
They have to put down a deposit.
They put down a deposit. Yeah, there's an additional. And developing this new fee structure, we've tried to account for a lot of that. We're not going to capture everything. We realize that because we're still trying to entice production companies to come in. We want to make it appealing, Oregon City appealing for them to film here. So we're trying to capture some costs, but still keep the fees at a nominal rate. So if you look at the proposed fee schedule.
Yes.
We have, we've tiered it. Tier one, tier two, and tier three.
Right.
Tier one is basically, that's the basic. They're not requiring any city services or using any parks or public property. That's basically just for staff time for processing the application and so forth. Tier two would be the staff time, the basic rate plus reserving park. And then tier three is the big production, where they're using a lot of city services, reserving parks. They're in the right of way, that sort of thing. And then beyond that, if it's Star Wars or something, we're going to be here a week.
It'll all be done on the computer.
So if we have Star Wars 12 come in, you know, and they're here for a long time, they're using excessive city services, reserving city property, then we start charging by the hour. We look at that.
So do you know how we compare to other cities on the fees?
Well, from what I know, our experience, we're, the way we structured our fees, it's pretty even keel, I think. We're right in line with what others are trying to do in the area. California's a little different, yeah.
I want to undercut everything. So they all come here.
Rocky Smith was good enough to log on. I'll give Rocky Smith a chance to look up here now.
Sorry, Rocky. When I'm up here and I say, it seems like we just did something, like I feel so old because no one knows I'm talking about. But I think it was within the last few years that we created the policy that we have currently for movies. I don't know how long it's been, but it's been since I've been here, I think. So I would have liked to see, not, I wanted to kind of compare what we've got now to what we have, because it's not that old and it's, and see, kind of just so I could see the changes and stuff. But this whole, this whole idea is amazing. I think it's really great. And definitely Oregon City's been a focal point. And so if we can make that even easier, I think it's worthwhile.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Corbin, Ms. Jock, anything else you want to add?
Yes, if I could just clarify the question about fees, permitting and usage fees. We also want to clarify that we never get involved with negotiations with private property owners. So we try to promote sites. So Jamie and I were showing the Blue Heron Site actually to a film crew. Unfortunately, they were from a very warm climate and it was in December. It was icicles and they weren't quite prepared for it. But we, we're not here to take the place of the site selectors or the businesses. We're just here again to show them. But they do then negotiate with businesses downtown if they're going to use their storefronts or use their businesses or use private property. We don't get involved. That's between the property owners. I just wanted to clarify that as a role.
That's good.
If there was a property owner or whatever that wanted to be, how do, do they just contact your office if they want their property to be listed on this?
Yes, absolutely.
And then what is the outreach that I assume you're doing to do, to build that even more? Because I was actually, I shouldn't say this. I was called at work actually one day in the middle of my lunch period from scouts from GRIM. Because the lady was driving around Oregon City and she went into Singer Hill Cafe and said, I need a house that looks like this. And they said, well, you should call Rocky. And so they called me. So, but I know that there's a lot of people, you know, and I said, well, yeah, you need to go down this street and check this house out or whatever. But I'm sure there's a lot of places, you know, high school here in Oregon City and other places that aren't being utilized, that we have already, as Oregon City, kind of opened the doors to film projects. But I'm sure there are other people that would want to know how to make, how to get their place or house or business onto that.
Yes, and as Jamie mentioned, we just hired yesterday an intern from the Clackamas Community College Film and Media Program to update our database. And we will be sending out to chambers, to cities, and trying to get the word out. We don't want to promise anything. We got to be careful that we don't say, you know, you want to be in the movies and promise that their property will be. But it's an opportunity to get listed on the database.
Great.
Thank you.
Appreciate the presentation.
So what staff would request is that the commission consider this and consider moving this to a regular commission meeting for adoption, for the ordinance and fee structure.
Very good. I would.
Now, I mentioned your ballpark again, Community Investment Initiative project.
Yes, tonight's all about partnerships. And this is another one.
Well, you want a couple of people to come forward yet or not?
I'm just going to give a quick little introduction and I'll invite them to come forward. As, I might have mentioned this before, but there is this group or this effort called Community Investment Initiative. They're all about, to sum it up in real simple terms, all about trying to get communities ready for development. To, they're investing in infrastructure, workforce, all kinds of things that help communities get development-ready. Out of this effort, there is this pilot program called the Development Readiness Assessment Tool Pilot Program. There's a group out of the Community Investment Initiative that's been focusing solely on this. And they were, early on, seeking jurisdictions that would participate in this pilot program. So I guess it was an application or an application process of sorts. You know, who would be willing to do this, throw their name in the hat? And I guess I immediately spoke up. I thought it'd be a good, you know, given the dynamics of Oregon City and where we are with our economic development program, I thought it's a prime opportunity to maybe take the lead, take charge in developing something like this for the region. So I threw Oregon City's name in the hat. We were chosen as the pilot jurisdiction for this program. And since that time, I've been working with the Community Investment Initiative team, who I've invited here tonight. And they're here to speak a little bit more about the program and how Oregon City's going to be involved. And it's just a good thing. So this time, I will invite Joel Schening and John Southgate and Laura Lai Gentman. Thank you.
Thank you guys for waiting for you.
Thanks for having us. So I will give a little bit more context about the Community Investment Initiative in general. And then John will talk to you a little bit more about the Development Readiness Program. And Laura Lai will add to that to talk a little bit about the, how it will be piloted or how we'd like to pilot it here in Oregon City. In 2008, Metro started looking, as it always, as it regularly does, at the urban growth report and at the forecast for the millions more people that are going to move to the region in the next 50 years, 30 years. Along with that, they did a study looking at what kind of infrastructure would be needed in the region to support that population growth. And specifically, how the region would be able to pay for that infrastructure. And what they arrived at was a large gap in the neighborhood of 20 billion. Understanding that there would be a regional effort to sort of resolve that issue, they started seeking partnerships in the private sector. And the private sector recommended that a private group be put together to help sort of find a solution to this. Thus was born the Community Investment Initiative. In 2011, the Community Investment Initiative was launched. It now is upwards of 30, close to 40 members. I believe we, you have a handout in front of you that has a list on the back of all the participants. That group of people has been, has broken up into a few strategies, all of which focused around the mission of building the region's economy by investing in infrastructure to support the creation of living worse jobs. The strategies are based, one, on the idea to sort of lead in the development of a regional investment enterprise. You can think of this as something equivalent to a sort of partnership to find new resources, both public and private, to build infrastructure. The second piece is to partner in the creation of a development readiness program. And the idea here was that, thinking about how we could better use existing resources and maximize and use efficiencies to sort of maximize our use of available resources. Additional strategies included supporting statewide and region-wide and local efforts to invest in transportation and education and human capital. But those have been issues about which the CI has been more sort of supporting others' work rather than taking on that work of its own. John, do you want to talk a little bit about the development readiness strategy?
Great, thank you. My name is John Southgate. I'm with the Hillsborough Chamber of Commerce. But most of my career has been working with municipalities. I have not had the privilege of working in Oregon City, but I've worked in Portland and Gresham, and most recently Hillsborough, generally in a seat like Eric's, working in economic development. I think what Development Readiness Mission is looking at, oh, here it is, assist communities in capturing the development they desire. I think when you're in economic development or when you work with a city, I think really you should constantly be asking yourself, are we doing everything we reasonably can to make sure that our processes, our regulations are accommodating what we want to see? And I think that's the heart of this effort, is to look at, start with a city that has the courage to sort of be the pilot and kind of open up its book, so to speak, and say, okay, go ahead and draft this pilot, which Laura Lai will be able to describe, and help us, in this case, Oregon City, figure out, are we, you know, at least close to making the sort of development happen that we want to make happen? And it's interesting, we're following this thing about film and video. I think implicit in that conversation is, you want to be accommodating that. You want to encourage that because of all the economic development, all the benefits of that. So someone, Eric, working with Kathy and the others with Clackamas County, said, all right, does our system work? And I think the question was, no. And so let's make it better. And that's what you're on the path to doing. I think this is largely the same sort of thing. If you want to encourage more, you have a great main street. I always sing Lloyd's praises. He just, to me, he's the model of a successful main street manager. You have a great main street. But if someone wants to develop a new project in main street that fulfills your vision for a better main street with more density, more people living there, more shops, is that relatively easy to do or is it relatively hard to do? I think it's usually going to be a mixed answer. There's always things room for improvement. There's things I'm sure that you're doing well. I don't want to be too long-winded, but I think it's really important work. And I, again, I want to commend Oregon City for saying, all right, let's take a look at ourselves. I can tell you, there's some cities that don't want to do that, you know, that they don't want to know. And I think, you know, some of the news may be, eh, we have some room for improvement. But that's something that you want to know. I want to emphasize implicitly in this, this is voluntary. No one's going to be required to do this either, certainly as a pilot. But even when we ultimately have this system in place, it's going to be voluntary. If any city wants to participate, or for that matter, unincorporated areas of our counties, the tool will be available, but no one's going to force it upon you. I think it's also intended not to say, you got to throw out your code. It's more, okay, is your code effective? Are your processes effective? I guess where I'll leave it is, you know, having worked with developers over the decades really, you want to get to rapid certainty. And I think that's probably going to be, I don't know, maybe I don't want to anticipate or step on a moralized presentation, but that's a real question, is if there's a lot of uncertainty from monster to monster moving goalposts. I know you all, you know this, but that's the sort of things I think that's getting. So I'll just wrap up by commending you for being willing to help us experiment through this.
Okay. So I'll talk a little bit about the assessment tool. As you might have gathered from this conversation, it is a little bit of a two-phased process. And right now, where we are is trying to develop an assessment tool that can be useful to eventually, in a later phase, scale up to something that's more region-wide. And as a pilot community, you're going to help us do that, mostly through the work of Eric and hopefully Tony as well. And create a tool that we can then, we can then also make some recommendations about how the process went so that it will be useful in other communities as well. And you're exactly right, John. The key variables that we're looking for here are not, it's not about comparing Oregon City to Tualatin or Portland. It's about embarking on a process of continual improvement so that you're constantly sort of reflecting on what's working well in your processes and what isn't. And maybe creating an opportunity for some benchmarking and ongoing action planning to try to improve this over time. So we're trying to set it up so that what we're looking at is, are your processes efficient? Are they, do they create predictability? Are they, do they create predictability for developers, and for others that are engaging in them? Do they bring in the right community members at the right time? Not, is your fee set at the right level? Does your code work? Those, those pieces of it are more, more policy-related. Here, we're talking about the effectiveness of the program. I put together a simple little handout. I don't know whether you all have it. It looks like this, but without so many scribbles. I won't go through this in a lot of detail, I want to be respectful of your time, but I will hit a couple of key points. As I said, we are in the process of developing the tool right now. We have gotten other inputs in that process. We've put out a survey to developers, to try to understand what they feel is really the most important piece of the program that you all would have. We have gotten quite a bit of input from the Development Readiness Group of the Community Investment Initiative, and also have connected with other jurisdictions, mostly folks that are community, in the Community Development or Planning Division, as we've been putting this together. So, with all of that, we do have a draft tool, and we intend to sit down with your staff at some point, probably in early April, work through it, see what works, see what doesn't work, but also hopefully provide some really good feedback to you all about where your programs have strengths and weaknesses. And you should think of it as a diagnostic tool, it's not a, you know, it's not, it's a sort of meets, exceeds, needs improvement kind of scale, but it does break into a number of different categories that are described at the bottom of the page here, really, all of the kinds of places where, if you think about the Venn diagram of your, the world of, the world of development, and the world of local government, wherever you're in that middle part there, that's, that's the full range of the program that we're trying to evaluate. So, it covers everything from land availability, and site readiness, to outreach and engagement, and does really try to focus in on, on development culture, and customer care. So, we want to make sure that it's a tool that really is going to be useful, but also practical, and will be respectful of staff time, and will be something that can be implemented through a collaborative process, that eventually, when it scales up, will be housed with a third party that looks like it's probably going to be the Urban Land Institute, so they may be at the table in this part of the process as well. So, that's a pretty quick overview. I'm sure you have some questions, and we'd be happy to take those when we get to that part of the presentation. Anything else?
I would just add a couple more things, in terms of where we're going direction-wise. I think Laura Lai hit on some of the points. Some outcomes we expect, as she mentioned, is a draft tool, which we'll be taking back to the CII's Leadership Council, and to Metro Council, and to MTAC, and MPAC, and outreach to public and private sectors, again, to get feedback on how it's looking, and whether or not we think we've arrived at something that is really ready to be scaled up to the region. Outcomes for Oregon City, we hope it's an opportunity for you to celebrate your strengths, find some new opportunities, as Laura Lai mentioned, and an opportunity to help you communicate the things you're already doing well. I think that's one of the additional outcomes of this, is, is an ability to say, we had a consultant come in, who can tell us, we're doing really well on this part, and be able to shine a light on that for you also, and communicate that to your development community. So, if, with your blessing, we'll be doing this in the spring, and then, summer, we'll be delivering those reports out to the relevant regional stakeholders, with the idea, we're working, as Laura Lai mentioned, with the Urban Land Institute, on an opportunity to sort of bring this out to other jurisdictions in the region. We have actually gotten expressed interest from others to sort of get in line, so you might really be able to establish yourself as an early winner in this process.
Depends on what happens to us.
We are the city of rares.
Thank you, Joel, and thank you, Laura Lai, and John. But I'd like to add, too, that, you know, we will have a tool, as they said at the end of this process, but, you know, I think, the exciting thing to me is that we'll know ourselves a lot better, and we'll be able to communicate our strengths and ourselves better to the outside world, to the developer community, and, and we'll have these efficiencies in place that will only benefit us, I believe. So, I'm excited about that.
Commissioner Moon?
I think this is very exciting stuff, and thank you for throwing yourself out there, Eric, in the city. I do want to say that we need to be business-friendly, and development-friendly, but we also can't give away the farm, so to speak, so it's a fine balance. So, I'm glad that you guys are reaching out to the developers, and looking at their needs and wants, so that's great. All in all, I think it's going to be wonderful, once it's done, I'm very excited. Thank you.
Yeah, I'd had an opportunity to meet most of you. Mr. Southgate, you're getting the experience of dealing with a city licensed $50,000 this time, and I appreciate the, what you're doing. I've seen the Community Investment Initiative over two or three years, and it's evolving, and I think I mentioned to you when you came in, that I was really pleased to see that there was some meat coming on the bones, and that we're bringing some of the first meat of this, and I appreciate that. When you look at this, you know, we, we extol our Main Street program, too, it's been a great program. Are you looking at through the whole, our whole area that is identified as commercial, industrial, and so forth, the whole job landscape, if I could put it that way, throughout the whole city?
Yes, that's been a challenging aspect of developing the tool, is developing something that we think can sort of apply to all the various development types, but that is the perspective we're starting with, is that it would be something that would apply to all the, all the development areas, but specifically, coming from the Community Investment Initiative, and Metro, being concerned with centers and employment areas.
And the question, of course, we all have, and I know it's an evolving thing, does money ultimately come with it?
She deferred to you.
We brought you a consultant. Beyond that, I can give you one example, I think, which would be fair, which is the Urban Land Institute's program that they're thinking about, and, and there's a model in Seattle that they call the Quality Growth Alliance, which is based on projects, not jurisdictions, and the projects go through a sort of review process with a sort of broad umbrella that includes stakeholders from the business community, environmental community, various, different communities in Seattle. And the idea is that assessment comes for free, and, and it comes through the resources of the ULI, and technical assistance offered by the various partners. So, right now, they're thinking that it would not necessarily be something that would automatically come with money, but the assessment itself wouldn't cost you, and so, to the extent that you could leverage the outcomes of that to access more development, and all, and the revenue streams that come along with that, yes. So, we're not making any promises about anything that comes with it at this time, but there are thoughts about also connecting it with the other strategies of the CII, and those things are very loose at this time.
Commissioner Ron?
My question is, is this similar to the, I'm believing it's called the Beaverton Economic Development Districts?
Eco-districts, Economic Development Districts.
That the city has put together to incentivize city-centric, developable sites, and, and given, you know, special incentives to those sites in working with development? Is that anything, like, is that where we're headed? I mean, I think it's a wonderful program, but I'm just trying to refine it a little bit.
I think this tool's a little broader than what you're talking about. I'm not as familiar with that specific program, but it sounds like some program that identifies specific opportunities, sites, and then tries to attract developers to them.
Right.
That, that kind of site readiness activity is one of the indicators that we'll be looking for when we're doing the evaluation, but we won't actually be putting any programs like that in place. It might end up being a recommendation that comes out of this.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Go ahead, Joel.
I would just add also that when the Community Investment Initiative was looking at this issue, one of the gaps they saw was, well, they saw a lot of work being done at the site level, in terms of, there were existing site readiness programs, but there weren't programs in place that were looking at sort of what jurisdictions could be, how jurisdictions could be better leveraging their development opportunities. So, they thought as that, as a, as a place for the CII could kind of add value to the region by developing this tool.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Volle?
I think this is great, and I think it's courageous of our city to, you know, be evaluated, and kind of look at ourselves from the developer's perspective, and I think it's very necessary in order for us to move forward, so this is great, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Well, appreciate your coming out, and I'm very happy that we're the guinea pig. That's great, that's great.
We're the pioneer. There you go.
Pioneer sphere.
Thank you very much.
There you go. This is great, thank you guys.
Thanks for having us.
Bye.
Thank you, Eric.
It's exciting.
It's exciting stuff.
And, you got a staff report coming, and I, David, are you going to introduce it, or am I, or am I getting ahead of myself?
Are you on item 3D?
I'm getting ahead of myself, yes.
You're behind yourself.
It's going to be a 3D?
No, I am behind this. No, this is 3D, this is, this is, yeah.
3D.
Yeah. So, do you want to introduce it, or should I? Because I, let me just take a moment to do a mea culpa. At the last commission meeting, we, we had some suggestions in terms of, of an additional value to be put on to the, looking at our opportunities that we had at the former mill site, and, in trying to work out an agreement with the bankruptcy trustee, and so, I had the short-sighted notion of maybe putting in a statement associated with it, and it wasn't coming to, from our various partners, it was only coming from us. And I think a tremendous amount of concern was expressed on the part of our partners, and it was, I think, something that I put forward that probably caused a lot of angst, and I think we need to deal with that. So, with that introduction, I'll give it to you.
So, essentially, when we, at the last meeting, inserted some additional language to strengthen the concern about historic preservation, and knowing that, in fact, Mr. Conkle and I were discussing this earlier, and preservation is a, is a word that means different things to different people. For example, the example that Mr. Conkle used was, our Native American friends might have a different view of what preservation means, the Blue Heron Site, for example, than, than we do. And, so, recognizing the volatility of the definitions, and the fact that people could get really tangled up around that word, and what it means, and what it doesn't mean, the partners, I think wisely, at the outset of this effort, decided to intentionally leave that language vague, so that it could be sorted out through this regional planning process that we want to do. So, the, the fear, which is actually driving some of the concern, I think, about preservation, I think this is a really, I mean, this is the conversation we know that our community and the region is going to have about the site. All of us have been on tours there, we know, without any doubt, that there's valuable historic assets there that we believe have economic value and redevelopment, and I don't think that's going to be hard to figure out. But what we've done is try to word that vaguely, so that when you go into this process, you don't, I believe it was actually Commissioner, or, former Commissioner Nacita, who mentioned the zoning classification the first time we talked about this, he thought that the zoning description was a little too defined, and we actually softened that language because he had a very good point there. Well, that same reasoning can be used with regard to preservation. You don't want to be too strict in how you're defining that, because you want to leave the door open for all these other possibilities. And, Mayor, you're correct. We, I think the commission took that on that night, and not realizing that we were sort of unilaterally changing the agreement with our partners, and there are a lot of people watching our meetings, because people are involved in this project now, there's momentum behind it. Lots of people in higher political offices than, than we have here are looking at taking big political risks to fund some of the redevelopment there, so we have to be careful that we don't go out and do something that's going to cause fear amongst our partners, without really going through that process of talking to them about it first. So, what I think, Mayor, you communicated to me and the commission in your email, is that you would like to have a motion to reconsider this, and essentially table any of those changes until a later date, and let the planning process work itself out. Ironically, we're getting public input, so that we could go get public input. So, we're still going to do that. We're looking forward to the process of getting that regional planning effort underway, but I believe, Mayor, that's where you wanted the motion to go, and if the council agrees with you, then we would put it on your next agenda, to have that reconsidered as an action item.
I want to make sure to deal, have a discussion here at this time, because although she will be on speakerphone, Commissioner Roth will be actually advocating for some of the things we're talking about on a visit to Washington, DC. And so, I want to make sure we, we're here as a whole body in the, in the study session to have any discussion in terms of whether the commission wants this to go forward. Personally, I do, especially since I recommended the motion, I couldn't make it, but I recommended it. With that, is there any further discussion, or do you want to just say, simply say it is a good idea to bring it forward to the, to the commission level? And I'll get on the floor, and Betty Mum is first, she's waving her hand excitedly here, and you are on the, you are on the list.
I do have to constantly remind myself that we are partners in this, we are not the owners. And I, in my own job, work with a lot of partners and stakeholders, and it is a fine balance that you have to take. So, I do understand the partner, and I don't want to upset that apple cart unless we have to.
Commissioner Row?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, you know, with the same mindset, I don't want to upset the partners, and hopefully have going for us, as far as we seem to be headed in the right direction, I guess. What I want to make sure of, and this is a question that I just kind of mulled over last night, so I'm probably not going to have the numbers and the words right, but is the trustee aware that as a federal agency, he is bound by the National Historic Preservation Act, Code 106?
We, I'm going to have to go back and look, because we had a discussion about this early on, right after it was filed for bankruptcy, and there's some disagreement, because there was a long discussion about whether federal funds were being put in versus a trustee managing a property, and there was, there was a lot of discussion about that. And, I honestly do not remember off the top of my head, it was about two years ago, when we had those discussions, we had several executive sessions on that.
But he's not a federal employee? He's, I thought he was a government, the trustee, the bankruptcy trustee was...
I guess if...
It's a federal judge.
Can I come, I'm not an attorney.
Yeah, you can come back later.
We had, we had multiple attorneys discussing this.
Yeah.
And I'd be more comfortable.
That's, that's fine.
We've had this discussion, and, and there was some disagreement about how far that, you know, is a federal bankruptcy trust court, or a trustee, the same as receiving federal funds?
Right.
Or from a federal agency? And, and so, that's the high level of what I can remember right here on the spot. I think it would be better if I was able to bring that back with you. I think we had Mr. Sullivan working on that. We also had a, had a letter drafted, and maybe we can bring that back to you?
Okay.
To have that, that discussion.
My other part of that question is, if, no, when we get federal funding, it will bring all of those things with it, all of those train cars will follow it, so that we'll be, the site will be under many, many more historic preservation clauses, so...
I'm not sure, yes, yes, there are requirements associated with spending of federal money.
Right.
And, it's, it's not necessarily a more or a less, it's just, it's a process that you need to go through.
Right, okay, that's what they're saying.
When you're spending federal money in terms of understanding the historic resources and other resources that are on the site before those federal monies are spent. Usually.
So, where I was going with this, is it's making me feel more comfortable with the other interpretation.
And one other thing, I might have mentioned this, but the amount of historic analysis, and the inventories, and all the ship of work that Christina, and Tony's department has done so far on the site, all of that is designed to make sure that historic preservation is in whatever, to whatever extent, and whatever that definition ultimately means, whatever resources on the site, we wanted those embedded as a, as a documented part of the framework that we have to work with on the site.
Right.
So that it would be possible to have those discussions about what should be salvaged, what shouldn't, what has actual value, what doesn't. And, if we hadn't done all that inventory work to sort of embed it into the process, I think there would be... work to sort of embed it into the process, I think there would be a more legitimate reason to be fearful about loss of those assets. Mayor, you mentioned we don't own the property and we all know the intended risks with the trustee and that, that, you know, we aren't the property owner. But I think we're trying to position ourselves as best we can to salvage what resources we can on that site by doing the work that we've done and making sure it's embedded in this planning effort. So-
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith.
All the points brought up are, you know, exactly what I feel too. I think, you know, it's citizens of Oregon City that are very much concerned about the heritage and the history of that site have to know that we're just as concerned.
Yeah.
And that's why we did what we did last week, which got us, you know, probably to a place where, you know, it was causing some anxiety. We have to get through this process and we can't risk that. We can't risk screwing that up. But, you know, there's a lot of things happening and if we don't get through that process, I, I just want to, it's, it's hard. I, I got a lot of flack from people after the last meeting because people weren't happy with how little we did last week.
(laughing)
And, you know, and, you know, taking the one person that they know is, is probably, you know, very extremely concerned about heritage and, and history, why didn't do more. There's a lot of things happening in this process and, and not everyone knows that, but I can assure you that this group of people is completely concerned about it and is going to do whatever we can, you know, to-
Absolutely.
-preserve as much as possible. And I think it's safe to say all the other partners feel the same way.
I agree.
The problem is, is you have a heritage site that is multifaceted, that is, you know, multiple generations of history upon others and upon others and saying, you know, just as you pointed out, what does preservation of that site mean? Does it mean we reopen a mill? Does it mean that we demolish the mill and, and save the Main Street? Or does it mean we demolish everything and save it as a Native American site? I mean, what does that mean? And, and I, I think all of us have concerns about each facet of that history. And so, you know, it doesn't help for, we can't really assure the citizens that we're doing what they want, but they have to trust that we're working as hard as we can on it so we can get through this process and then have this master plan process go through where everyone can participate in it.
Right.
You know, I think a, a year ago, there was a lot of us that thought if we could, I mean, we didn't know a year ago if we were going to get anywhere in this process. And to, we didn't know if we were going to get partners on board to help. We didn't know if people beyond the city was, you know, that these other partners were billed. I think it's absolutely shocking where we're at right now and it's so, it's so exciting that we've managed to kind of take that risk to get involved in this process from the beginning. And I think that if we stick with it, which we all plan to do, the, the outcomes will be great. But you got to trust us. And I know that's not easy.
And that's hard, isn't it?
It's really hard.
But, but I do want to say it would be helpful if we, when we get in those weeds and we forget we're partners, if you guys just remind us.
We'll keep doing that.
More emphatically next time. Tony was quite very, very hard to do.
You already did something more dramatic than usual.
Yes, you might be a little bad.
You've already demonstrated you can walk on your hands. That might have added an impression.
We might be. That is our political strength.
Anyway, yes, I wanted to also mention something because sometimes the, what is perceived as a higher, higher government in the, in this, in the hierarchy of things, we get flack to. But the regional, metro regional government has been a tremendous partner with us on this project. And they continue to be. I mean, they've gone, we've gone through one phase of the, of the evaluation of the site thanks to their partnership and, and I think we're pretty certain that they're going to continue in a major way. And the county is now joining us in this partnership, which is great. And the state has, right at the moment at least, we have a budget item that's specifically directed to this particular site. And so, it is critical that we, we take this into account in terms of what we formally do on, on, in this dais here. And so, it's extremely important.
I think it's also important to point out that the state has been an amazing resource with the regional solutions team. Roger Roper from State Parks for the State Historic Preservation Office actually attended or called into our weekly due diligence meetings. I mean, we, it's, when you talk about a partnership and Rocky, I agree, Commissioner Smith, how far this has come. And it's only because of this partnership that we've been put together. And a lot of staff time, expertise and horsepower has been behind it pushing this thing to get to where we're at.
I agree. So, do we need to move it to our meeting?
Yeah, that's, I think we got a consensus that would come. Tony, I want to thank you very much for your due diligence because when I hear, when I hear the members of our partners getting excited about it, it's in large part due to the tremendous planning effort you have done. And I want to really commend you for that effort. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Thank you.
That's City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor. We have with us tonight our Main Street manager Lloyd Purdy. Lloyd is, under my reports, going to make a short presentation to update you on downtown Oregon City.
Well, thank you while you're coming forward. Thank you for hanging out with us for all these hours. Thank you.
Some of this has been relevant to Main Street.
I think most of it.
Absolutely. Well, in fact, that steals my intro because I was making notes and downtown was heavily referenced in every other activity. So, this will be some icing on the cake. It's clear downtown's an important part of Oregon City and we all, we all know that and we're all celebrating a whole lot of successes. There's some people behind me I'm going to introduce as we move along. First, I should introduce my partner here, Ethan Erickson, who's the Main Street Oregon City Community Coordinator, Community Coordinator. He's going to join, join me in this presentation. It's going to be very brief and you know how quickly I talk. It's going to be a fast conversation.
(laughing)
Quickly for you all. You, full page.
On the bottom right.
Right next to the 69. Gotcha. Thank you, Tony. Thank you, Nancy. This is the downtown update featuring just some highlights from 2012. Though, what I'm going to brief you up, brief you in on very briefly, brief you in on briefly now is activity that we've been working on over the past two to three months and a little bit of looking forward to the next month. So, this is kind of like an interim. We're a quarter through our year and here's some stuff that's going on.
Why aren't we in this introductory picture?
Why aren't we in the which one or the?
Yeah, so I said, why aren't we on these introductory pictures?
You know, I have, in fact, I've got a great one of the commission and myself.
Okay, okay. Well, just wait patiently.
At the art.
At the art. That's fun. Maybe I'll, I'll switch that one out. I like to remind everybody of the, the facts, the figures, the almost the statistics, the downtown by the numbers. And we've got some good news to report. Since December through the end of, let's say, March, we will have had four new businesses open up downtown. That is retro revival on Cottage Row, which is 14th Street, Flying Monkey Mercantile, opening up on, a retailer of women's apparel, new women's clothing, opening up on 6th Street, The Big White Goose. You might have seen an email from me today mentioning the new retailer on Cottage Row. So, now Cottage Row on 14th Street is full of retail. And then, I'm hoping, hoping by the end of month, end of the month, if not early April, Nebiola, the wine bar on the corner of 8th and Main will open. Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to say thank you for sending the emails about what's going on down there.
Happy to do it. Happy to do it. It's good to keep everybody up to date.
Absolutely.
Hence the downtown update. We are moving forward with the $80,000 Arts Commission for the light art projection on the municipal elevator. The city is the key partner in that because there's some local match to prepare the canvas. In two weeks, we'll be sitting down to look at the, to pick the finalist for that. We had over 40-something, 42 or 46 interested parties that wanted to do an art project here in our community. We narrowed it down to, I think, about a dozen that got reviewed, working with the Arts Alliance, Cheryl Snow. The, the review group narrowed that down to three. Amazing, astounding artists working with this fairly advanced and actually cutting edge of technology. Not a lot of people are doing projected light art. And I do this little hand signal as, as if I'm a movie thing flickering, a movie, a projection media flickering. It's going to be exciting. So, there's a team, one team from Portland made it into the final three, one artist from Indiana, I think it was, Midwest, and one from Chicago, also Midwest. Three teams, amazing type of artwork. So, once we get the finalists, we'll unveil that and announce that and show everybody some of what their work has been as precedent. That'll be a community-driven art project. Just anecdotally, in our walks around downtown, and Ethan does that a lot more now than, than walks around a lot more frequently than I do now, but I'm hearing from business owners that 2012 was better than 2011, trending out of the recession. They know that because they're doing their taxes. And I don't have specific numbers that I'm going to share, though occasionally I'll get specifics. The trend is 2012 was better than 2011 for downtown businesses. And even the last couple of months of 2013 have been better, trending better. So, anecdotally, we're seeing trending up in the health and the sales of our businesses. Summer event season is actually just around the corner. Downtown is host to several events. One we'll talk about specifically because it's produced by downtown. That's the First City Celebration. Ethan will give you more details on that. Of course, the Chamber traditionally brings the Antique Fair downtown. The Trick and Racy Car Club does the cruises to downtown and Oregon City. And I said four events, so there must be something else in there. I'm probably referring to the-
Tated Bear Parade.
Tated Bear Parade that kicks off downtown, as well as the triathlon that's gearing up, trying to organize, and I think it will happen, with a run through our downtown. And they had lots of routes they could have chosen for a, a triathlon component of a run. They wanted to, the organizers wanted to run down Main Street, through the tunnel, the elevator tunnel and up the grand stairs. That's kind of neat. They chose that for that reason. Also, I'll mention later in the group, and I want them to wave hi. I'm not looking, but go ahead and wave hi, guys and gals. Six graduate students from PSU are working with us over the next two to three months to explore the potential of residential development downtown. I'll get into that a little more in the future. It just was a number six, so it comes on my numbers page. And then another number, just so we know, and this isn't, this is just from what I can track on downtown, and as of today, it's 10. Downtown Oregon City has been featured in the media, on the newspaper, in the radio, on TV, 10 times since December 2012. That's good news. I call it good ink, although the ink is out of business.
Did you include, did you include the-
And we didn't have to pay for that.
Did you include the beaver herding of our police department? Was that one of your main items?
These are specifically tied to downtown stories.
That one was downtown, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was downtown.
I missed that one. I missed that one.
That was national news.
National, okay. Even better. So, we're probably up to 11 or so as of today. We put some considerable effort into making sure that downtown is a, is a, an emerald in the, in the, in the city's gems of success. And we want the whole world, certainly the region, to know that, you know, downtown Oregon City is now on the map as a place to live potentially someday, a place to work, a place to open a business. Looking further back, we're, we're working off a great history of success. You all know, because we've celebrated these every step of the way, the awards we've gotten from, from the state, from national awards like the Silver Telly, Silver Telly Award, that apparently is the, what do they call it? The Oscar of the commercials, by the way. Someone told me that. They saw that award sitting on the shelf. They said, what's that award? Oh, that's just something we did, a Silver Telly. Oh, the Oscar of commercials. Well, we got one of those a couple of years ago.
Great.
We, as, you know, the Oregon City community, great successes to celebrate. Many of those have been in partnership with the city, like the two-way Main Street that won multiple awards through the work of John Lewis's department. This is a reminder, but I know it's worth repeating some of these statistics so they're indelible, indelibly marked in our minds. And it's trending up. The municipal elevator, it's a local icon. And that art project is going to further celebrate and illuminate, light up that local icon. It's already seeing increased ridership. I know this is one of the mayor's favorite numbers. Trimet, we talked about transit today in downtown. A decent amount of people come into downtown through the transit center every week. The courthouse, we know that's a, a trip generator for downtown, an important part of downtown. Yes, there's problems and challenges along with that. We referenced that earlier in your meeting, the, the parking challenges that creates to the tune of 5,000 visitors a week. And in my favorite line, please laugh, they're not all in handcuffs.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay. The Arch Bridge is back open and that's part of why I think we're seeing business back to normal in downtown. Drivers along 99E, we know we have some work to do on what we show to visitors who pass through our downtown on 99E. They're not seeing the best side of Oregon City. Room for improvement there. You all know that we're working to make, and I'm going to highlight the, the highlighted parts, the bold parts, we're trying to make downtown a vibrant, mixed-use marketplace, unique businesses and entrepreneurs. We're always going to be more likely to find independent entrepreneurs operating downtown more than we're going to find franchises and chains. They can all happen, but more likely, we'll find the homegrown heroes, the people that live here, work here and want to run their business here. Yes, we have civic institutions downtown. That's an important part of the county seat role that the city plays and that downtown plays. We're growing the activities. We're growing the restaurants. And you can see, in almost every slide, I've hinted and pushed for this idea that we were, and it comes back to the development readiness program. We're going to start getting ready and talking more seriously about residential and housing reintroduced into downtown. The idea is that downtown should, could, and even is now still, after four years of really concerted effort and work, it's performing as our, our heart and soul. I can say that now. Four years ago, when I was hired, I don't know that we were there, but we're getting there now in a very good way. Another group that's in, in behind me, Paul Culp had to leave. He was here. He's the current president of the board, an award-winning business owner. Tim Tofti couldn't make it. He's a property owner, Barbara Orton, a business and property owner. Mike Gavazza is here, a business owner downtown. Like, thank him for making time to be here, as is Sue Stein. So, it's-
Raise your hands.
Raise your hands. Thank you. Thank you guys for hanging out with us.
Thank you. This is a volunteer-driven program. We work best when we're building partnerships and when we're using, let me say it, I mean, we're using the volunteer time of business owners, property owners. That was loud enough to hear. What a great name for a lawyer, Jared Justice. These are liaison to the largest employer group downtown. That's the legal community. An important liaison to us, to a large employer. Okay, real quickly, and I'm then going to move into the new content.
He's probably never heard of them.
Right. Reminder of what we do. We organize. We build consensus. We build partnerships. We develop new capacity with new groups and introduce people organizationally to downtown. We promote and market downtown, a lot of what Ethan's working on. We design, preserve, beautify. We enhance the physical atmosphere of downtown. And we have some economic activity. That includes the development of infrastructure. That includes business recruitment. That includes some of each of these other categories. And they all, they all interrelate. So, it's a four-point approach. National Trust is the model we follow, the national four-point, National Trust Main Street four-point approach model. It's a business model for a nonprofit. It says, work in these areas, these four areas, and you'll, you're bound to find success. What they forgot is you have to also fund it. You know, and we, we solved that one with partnerships with the city, partnerships with other organizations and entities, as well as the property owners forming their EID. Underorganizing and promoting, featured here is one of our downtown dialogues. That's the parallel to the downtown discussions. In fact, tomorrow, no, it's Thursday, Ethan will get into this more. Ethan's convening monthly downtown discussions for downtown stakeholders. The downtown dialogue was a focus group discussion session just for property owners. And we all got a, yes, you can be jealous. We got a sneak peek of Nebiola when it was, as it is now, under, under wraps and under continued development. Development funded in part by some city or urban renewal commission funding. You all are partners in the success of downtown. The downtown discussions. Ethan, you want to tell real quickly, 32 seconds or less, what's going on with downtown discussions?
Mayor Neely, the commission staff, thank you. The downtown discussion is one of the projects that we're working on right now. And every month, we do convene the, primarily the business community, the business owners in the downtown, give them an opportunity to gather for about an hour and talk about what it is, that the issues are that affect their part of the downtown, some of the issues that they face. It's a way to build that community capacity through that connection with each other. And a lot of them really enjoyed having a chance to just get to know their neighbors a little bit better. It's not something that they have time to do all on their own, so it kind of takes a structured environment. But it's really about that social capital and that community capacity, building that trust downtown as a community and for them to have resources within each other as, as a business community. So, to inspire and develop and retain that business culture. So to inspire and develop and retain that business culture. It's retaining that culture that, that we're kind of beginning to build here, so that there's never a really good reason to leave Oregon City for another place to locate your business. We want them to feel that sense of belonging to the downtown. Those monthly meetings are used to engage business owners on their terms, like I said, and we know that we've been successful in the first three, four months in piloting this program, just with the attendance that we've seen, representing roughly 20, 25% of the business community, who don't know who I am yet, and don't always need to show up at my meetings until we really put something on their agenda that, that's relevant, especially to them. And for those that own bars and restaurants, it's hard to get them to come in at 9:00 AM. So we're, this month, on Thursday, we're going to start our first 5:00 PM meeting, so that, kind of creating enough opportunity for business community to gather in and around the downtown. And this will be a program that continues to involve, so in terms of organizing and organization of our, of the community downtown, this is one of the things we're doing. So, the other is marketing and promoting. I'm surprised Lloyd left up my Facebook crop there. He's left that project all on my shoulders. It's not that big of a, a project, but this is an example of one way we take content and help continue to share it with more and more people. And you can see that 205 people saw this. And, you know, from a marketing and promotions perspective, that's, that's free, so we don't have to have a budget for this type of a thing. We amplify what content is currently being provided by other business communities out there, and we allow them to like each other's stuff and be more aware of what's going on within each business downtown. So we're constantly encouraging them to, to check out Facebook and to go talk to each other, but in terms of the media itself, kind of get on board with what each other's doing. And it's a way for us to kind of track and show the growth of the outreach that I'm able to provide that maybe Lloyd didn't have time for over the last several years. So, a little bit more of a concentrated effort.
Let's make a connection to what's happening later, the comments I'm going to make about my team behind us. Yesterday, we posted the link to a survey that these graduate students produced. Within, what were the numbers on Facebook on that?
I know that within about 10 hours, we had about 350 views, which this had been, you know, we only have about 250 people that are even listening to what we're saying at this point. So to have 200, that was encouraging, but in 10 hours and about a dozen comments, we have the entire Oregon City kind of realizing that residential is a topic that we need to start discussing. So whether it comes to you right away, immediately, or not, that's one of the tools that we have to kind of gauge very quickly some response. And it was exactly as I anticipated, and as you would anticipate, preservation of our heritage and our culture is a hot-ticket item, as much as encouraging that next generation of residents to begin participating in the local governance process and to start having an opinion about what kind of a community they'd like to see downtown as well. So it's, it's kind of a, everybody was able to kind of throw their two cents in there very quickly, and, and it was, it was healthy and positive.
So this drags 169-year-old downtown into the digital age, finally. We've made it. Should I move on?
Yep. One of the other projects that I'm working on right now is increasing the, well, I should say, refining and updating the way that folks from outside of 50-mile radius interact with the downtown, with, with Oregon City. Very quickly, you'll notice that Oregon City off I-205 is listed to exit nine only and not exit eight. That might be due in part to the fact that the bridge was closed for two years, but one of the other options for folks coming from downtown might be to come across the old historic bridge and ride on Main Street as well, instead of getting tied up kind of near the 15th Street side of town. If they didn't have business at the court, they might not find their way downtown. And we know that there's 36,000 people a day that are just one block off of Main Street, and we're still trying to do everything we can to help them interact with that Main Street environment. So, the red line that you see there is going to be the backside of the brochure. What you see in front of you is the front side of the brochure. It shows those access points, the Amtrak station, the interstate exits, 99, the gateways, and, and what we're not sure of yet is whether or not the start, the stops for the trolley will be located on that map or not. I'll leave them off for now until we know that there's a reason to sell that as a marketing and a promotion opportunity for, for the community. So on the back, it will be a zoom of the downtown that will feature City Hall and the elevator and all of the other beautiful things that we have, including the McLaughlin Promenade Walk View to the Falls, things that you can see and do in and around downtown, including, on that backside, the zoom of the downtown, any business that wants to contribute a small amount to cover printing costs, that when you come downtown for either court business or otherwise, or whether this is something you take home to Vancouver or Salem and you throw it on your refrigerator and you say, "The next time we're passing up through Portland, we'll stop in down on Main Street because look at all these wonderful restaurants that they have and all the other things to see and do down there." So, it kind of creates a, a way for the region to, to change its, its interaction with the downtown in a more intentional and informed way, through a product that they can take with them. The First City Celebration Street Festival is coming back in full effect for its fourth year. One of the things I'm going to do this year is have some volunteer sampling, the visitors that we have, and finding out what public opinion is more about the downtown and the community and the reputation that Oregon City has, and are we business-friendly or are we not, and how do we like what's going on there now, and how's the weather today, and everything from, you know, what types of food do you like down here? I mean, you, the, the community survey sample, survey instrument, that, that's still a long ways off from even being developed. But also incorporating the business community more intentionally by saying, "What is one thing that you can do to, to buy into this event?" I know that some businesses have intentionally closed their doors and decided not to want, be a part of this, whether out of protest or for good reason, or it just didn't pencil out to even show up and turn the lights on. All of those are valid reasons, but for the attendees that do come downtown, we want to make sure that we're offering them the best experience possible. And one of those things is developing individual programming within each restaurant or bar, beginning at 9:00 PM, so that right at 9:00 PM, when all of the artists are packing up and leaving, the four to 5,000 people that will have down there that day can be absorbed into the restaurants and bars for a series of after-parties, whether that's a featured karaoke night, a special DJ, or a, a marquee live music event that we can have. So, get them to stay longer, enjoy their time more, and certainly spend a little more money downtown.
They won't have to go home, but they won't be able to stay on the street.
Yeah. Well, and we don't want them milling about, quite frankly. We're going to be opening back up the street to have the artists, you know, loading their stuff and getting out of there. So as, as much structured activities we can have from 9:00 to 11:00 is going to be good for everybody.
Hit a couple slides. Yeah, there you are, Doug.
Should have shown me my bald head.
Real quick brief in on some of the design and some of the economic development activities that we're engaging in or have been engaging in ongoing. One of those is the downtown walkabout, whether that's with a, an opinion leader or an elected official like Kurt Trader. He first did a tour of the mill site, and then a couple weeks later came back and met with business owners downtown. Doug joined us on that. That's Doug and Kurt talking with Paul, Paul Culp from Super Genius. That's an active component of what I do on demand. Someone says I want to get a tour of downtown, I'll give it to them. It's good, good for us. I mentioned the Illuminate Oregon City Project. The photo you see, which is maybe going to become a hallmark photo, I would think, was courtesy of Devon Conroy Groves, the friendly barista door at Coffee Rush. She's also a-
Really nice.
-well, well-regarded photographer, does a lot of our night shots downtown. So you know about that project, you know to tune in for more on that. Light Up Downtown, along with the street being lit, the Singer Falls being lit, the potential soon for the elevator to be lit, we've been encouraging property owners to light up their property. This was a project that was funded through a Metro Enhancement Beautification Grant. Our goal is to have 10, 10 projects. I think we're about halfway there. It's matching funds. We've also brought some funding in from Metro's Development Center to pair a technical expert up to the property owners or the business owners who don't know what to do, but they want to do something. So now we have free technical advice, matching funds, there's energy trust rebates. We should see some good, good results of this. In fact, we have, are already seen several good projects come online. The first round of projects were for, for some smaller, lighting above a door, some strategics, maybe stuff where we know it was just too dark of a space. I think we're going to see another round of projects that are more visible even as you walk or drive down the street. Live It Up Downtown. This is my chance. Don't worry about the little redhead in the corner, but half this crowd, on that picture, half the crowd, five, six of the team is here now. And you all can probably stand up while I look at your picture and rattle off your names, please. Kate, Ryan, Jenny, Derek, Ian. Did I miss anybody? This is our team. They've christened and named themselves Five to Nine Consulting.
Love it.
You could probably, you could probably hire them, but right now, they're doing their work as, as a team of students from PSU. There were 40 different projects proposed to this class. The class overall chose, I think, six. This team chose ours because they knew it was the best. They even told me, first day, "We know your project is the best, Lloyd. It's the most focused. You know what you want to get out of the work, and what we want to get out of their, their work through June is a, I'll call it, call it a residential roadmap." We know how to do residential development in downtown buildings. We even know where it can be done, but there's a gap. And some of it ties to development readiness, some of it ties to the role of the public sector, some of it ties to the private market. How do we prepare or prime the pump for the private market, market to do what hasn't been done in 169 years? Reintroduce residential back into an old downtown. We know what used to be there, it's time to, to bring that back. So, these students, these graduate students, these young professionals are here to say hi tonight, to give you a friendly face, because I think they'll either be calling or be emailing or be in discussion, discussions with each of you to help them get a better understanding of the project. Almost done, and then we can open up to any questions you all have. Almost done, because I like to end with this slide. I reminded my board of directors today that we're strongest when we're a tool for building partnerships. I know some of the logos didn't come out, that's all right. My goal for the year is to see more, more icons of other entities on this page. As we build partnerships, we become a more effective tool to make Oregon City a better place to live, a better place to work, a better place to visit. These are all successful partnerships that have resulted in transformative change. That's when we're at our best, building partnerships, cultivating capacity, building community. I think that's it. Yep.
Thank you, Lloyd.
Wow, that was good.
Not perfect. Thank you. The students from the consulting team have a very well-put-together work plan that we've helped craft, and I look forward to them being with you. And as always, if not now, whenever you have questions about what we're doing downtown or you want to get involved, call me, email me, let me know.
This is all good stuff. Thank you.
When was the, when was the meeting, this, the evening meeting?
It'll be 5:00 PM at Cypress, Oregon City. John Chapala will do his regular Thursday programming, which is a tasting of a fine spirits, a rare and fine spirit. That'll be following the meeting, but another incentive for the professional community to come together.
On Thursdays?
Thursdays at 5:00 PM. There's also, the more, the more, better attended one will likely be the 9:00 AM meeting.
So there's two on that day?
There are two.
There are two that day.
Same meeting. Primarily, the focus will be the event layout space, so looking at where food vending can go, where restaurants can serve, where the artists will be placed, so it's a due diligence, public involvement effort to make sure that the business community really enjoys what they're getting themselves into.
I was pleased to meet one of the students today at my Coffee Rush stop.
At the mayor's shop.
And I really am very pleased when Portland State students become involved, because I am an alumni. And we also, I think I mentioned to her that Oregon Department of Transportation enlisted its support from the architects to do some gateway planning as part of our road project, and you're a great resource, and I'm looking forward to your work, but to also all kinds of future opportunities that we do have in Oregon City. Anyway, the, we've been very pleased. Wanted to mention that a couple of times I've gone down on, to get a lunch on Wednesdays, there's been very positive comments about Farmers Market's interaction there and that they do pick up business during that period of time. And also, the, the people there, they're putting together a wine shop, they look at that, that location is an ideal one, because it, it has doors both onto Main Street and then also to, to 8th Street, where the mark, where the Farmers Market is, and they think that'll be a, a great opportunity for them to do business at that particular time. So, the events down there, I think, do play a major part in terms of success at various points. And, and I had picked up from one of the businesses down there, located right at the base of the Arch Bridge, that they were having some difficulty, but as soon as the Arch Bridge opened up again, they saw their business pick up again. So, I'm very pleased with everything that's going on down there. One of the things that I would encourage your students to do when they have recommendations to us, to come maybe before their Urban Renewal District Commission as well, because I think some of the recommendations are, are things that that particular entity might be able to assist in. So, but I'm very pleased you came out tonight and-
Yes, very excited.
Looking forward, looking forward to your product. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, guys. Very nice.
Thank you, Lloyd. Appreciate it. Thank you for showing up tonight. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Next thing I want to mention, before they leave, actually, I wanted to say that I actually had a, a chance to meet with some of the group of students from Five to Nine.
Yes.
And I think there's six of them altogether, between Five and Nine. And they coined a new phrase when we started talking about how to calm traffic on 99 and what would make it more appealing for residential, because that's really what the focus of their project is. And the phrase was boulevardization of 99. Now, I can't, I don't think anyone can say that word three times fast.
Right.
And I'm wondering if in a few years, if their capstone is successful, if we'll see that in the ODOT Guidelines Manual. That's going to be a really interesting-
That would be a good one.
That's going to be a really interesting debate.
If you can put something together that ODOT would buy into, you'd all be hired by us.
Last but not least, I want to report to the commission that County Board Chair John Ludlow has agreed to have periodic meetings with Mayor Neely and I. As you know, we haven't ever really done that, and so I think we're going to try to start off, maybe every other month, we haven't had one yet, but we wanted to get our, the dark fiber issue dealt with first, and now that we have that behind us, we're going to be looking in the next six or weeks or so, trying to set up our first meeting with him to talk about city-county issues that we might be able to work on together.
Oh, that's wonderful.
We have kind of a small list now, but, you know-
It'll grow.
It may.
Yeah.
So, that's all I have this evening.
Thank you.
Oh, that's right. We do have one more thing. Eric wants to talk a little bit about the Business Development Series at the library.
So, in economic development's continuing, business outreach efforts, I've begun discussions with Maureen Cole, library director, and talking about how we can use the library as a business resource and outreach to the community. And as a result of those discussions, we have conjured up the Business Development Series, or what I like to call the Business Nurturing Series, where we will have four events this next year. Each one, we would invite a speaker to talk about different aspects of starting and running a successful business. So the first one will be, we'll be inviting Rob Campbell of the Small Business Development Center to the library to give a discussion on business startups and the ingredients for sustaining a successful business here in Oregon City. So we're trying to capture both the entrepreneurs as well as the existing businesses here. And we're still working out the schedule. Another possibility might be workforce, how to extract from the existing local workforce for your business, and others along the way. So we're going to try it out with four this year and see how that goes.
Well, that's great.
That's all we have this evening. Carol Pauley had her name up, and maybe, maybe we lost our students? Did it have, did it have something to do with last presentation?
Yeah, it did, actually. I was just going to say that I really enjoy being on the Main Street Board, and the Main Street program has a lot of credit to do with the revitalization downtown. I've been very impressed with all the volunteers on- downtown. I've been very impressed with all the volunteers on that board and how flexible they have been to adapting to the changing needs of our downtown and responding to the businesses down there and just helping the culture in our downtown to thrive and grow. And then partnerships. Partnerships is huge. You see the, there's a list that they had there on partnerships. And PSU, I graduated from PSU, so I think it's great that we're using them. And they had, you know, many different projects to choose from, and they chose two in Oregon City. So, I think, I think that's, that's great. It's a big credit to Oregon City and people wanting to work with us. So, continue on in that energy. So, that's all I have.
Great. Anything else to the good of the order? Okay.